Mr. Collins, since you're joining us this evening, would you lead us in the salute to our flag?
I'd be on it.
Terrific, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Mitzi, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
West?
Here.
Salja?
Here.
McCusker?
Here.
Danessa?
Here.
Barton?
Here.
Good, thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, are there any changes or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that motion to approve them.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, voice vote. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes from July 17th say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved. Okay. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda, Mr. Zeiderbart?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. At this time, if there is anything not on our agenda that a member of the public would like to address, you are free to do so. If not, the procedure of the meeting will go as follows. I will announce the item to be heard. There will be a presentation by Mr. Zeiderbart on that item, and a recommendation made. We will, the commission will then ask any questions of Mr. Zeiderbart for clarification or additional information at that time. Subsequent to that, I will open the item for public hearing. And the order of testimony is the applicant is free to speak first, followed by those who are in favor of the item, followed by those who are in opposition to the agenda item. And then there will be an opportunity by the applicant for rebuttal of any voice in opposition to this item. Subsequent to all testimony, we will close the public hearing, bring the item back to the commission for further discussion, at which point I will request a motion to either approve, well, I guess to approve the agenda item, and then we'll vote on it. There is an appeal process. If someone would like to appeal the decision of the commission, we can explain that to you, and I'll be happy to do so if you request to do that. Very good. If there are no questions, Mr. Zeiderbart, could you please provide information on item 2.1?
Before 2.1, I need to reclusive myself. I have property in the downtown area, and it would be considered an unfair ethic situation for me to remain in the room or part of the meeting, so I'll excuse myself at this time. Thank you.
Very good.
Well, it was nice having you here for a while.
Yes.
Thanks, Dave. Kenny?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. The request here in front of you tonight is to convert a vacant building at 201 South Stockton Avenue into a restaurant. The existing building was formerly used as a bike shop and more recently as office space for the American Legion post 190. The parcel is located in the Central Business District, or what we refer to as our downtown district, which does allow for this type of use. So here's obviously the location of it, and this is the current building. Not a very good view up there. The current building that sits on the site there. So the current configuration of the building consists of approximately 1,960 square feet, as shown in this picture here. It's within the existing building. The applicant would like to improve the interior of the building by modifying the existing space and adding about 795 square feet onto the building itself. The interior improvements would include bathrooms. Get to the next slide for you. Bathrooms, kitchen, a cooler and freezer area, a bar area, and dining space. The applicant has also included, the dining space actually does also include some outdoor space where there would be outdoor dining on site. And then there's some conceptual ideas that were included in the packet as well of what the interior, what intends the interior of the restaurant to be similar to. These aren't exactly what it's going to look like inside, but this is kind of what's the concept ideas of how he would like to build out the inside of the restaurant. So these were included in the packet as well. Again, the applicant would also like to use some outdoor space for dining. This is allowable pursuant to the Ripon Municipal Code, basically by acquiring an outdoor dining permit with the city. The proposed exterior of the building will remain metal siding with many proposed enhancements, including new paint. The main entrance to the restaurant will be on First Street and include new glass doors and a new reclaimed wood facade surrounding the entrance. An awning will adorn the main facade entrance and will include signage for the restaurant. The applicant has also indicated that new glass roll-up doors will be added to the side of the building, allowing the restaurant the ultimate flexibility of combining the indoor and outdoor space. The plan indicates retractable awnings to provide shelter and shade for outdoor dining, the outdoor dining areas. The outdoor dining space includes tables and chairs, planter areas, and possibly some heaters and fans and low fencing to separate kind of the outdoor dining space from the main sidewalk around the restaurant. The applicant has also indicated that the fencing will be made of decorative metal railings with reclaimed wood plank, infill planks and panels. The outdoor dining space will be designed on some sort of a platform, which will enable the floor levels inside and outside the restaurant to be consistent with each other so that they can move in and out with dining carts and such. And also indicated on the site plan is the addition of a handicapped parking stall and a covered trash enclosure, which architecturally matches the main building. So as you can see, the facade shown here, there's some more pictures of it with the retractable awnings on the building. I'll kind of step through those for you. So as with any development within our downtown district, parking is always a concern. There are, however, special provisions and exceptions within our current zoning code pertaining to development within our downtown district. Essentially, the code states that businesses that are enlarged, reconstructed, or remodeled or structurally altered in the C3 district shall provide parking as determined by the planning commission until such time as special parking provisions are adopted by, for the C3 zone. Changing this use from an office or retail use that it was in the past to a restaurant does obviously increase the parking demand for the downtown area. It does increase by, the demand by about 34 parking stalls. The applicant has submitted a parking analysis for the project, which was included in your packet right there. And as indicated on the analysis, there are currently about 108 parking spaces within a 300-foot radius of the property site. Furthermore, he has indicated that within a two-block radius of the site, there are 319 public parking spaces. For further evaluation, staff performed a comprehensive parking analysis for our entire C3 district, which, this is a map of the entire C3 district area. The western boundary is Acacia Avenue. It does extend east over to kind of the overpass, a little north of Main Street, and then mostly encompasses both sides of First Street and a little bit of property along Second Street there as well. What was discovered during the evaluation was between public and private parking spaces in our downtown district, there's approximately 747 existing parking spaces in the downtown area. Further analysis of all existing businesses in our downtown showed a parking demand of about 868 parking spaces. The important item to note with this evaluation is that parking demand assumes worst-case scenario for parking needs. More simply said, is every business in the downtown would have to be full, and they'd have to all be open at the same time for that parking demand to be the 868 that was indicated on the, on our analysis. With that being said, this area of downtown does seem to be the most impacted as far as parking is concerned. However, the very nature of most downtowns is to encourage walking and strolling in the main streets. It is not unusual to have to walk several blocks in most neighboring, or even many affluent Bay Area downtowns, to frequent many of restaurants or retail establishments. Staff feels that the parking, although may be not always convenient, is sufficient in the downtown district to approve this type of use at this location. As part of the conditions of approval for the project, the applicant will have to repave the alley along the back portion of the site and upgrade the driveway entrance to the alley to meet current city standards. Providing parallel parking, also striping along First Street and some of Stockton Street to Walnut Avenue. And certain areas of Stockton Avenue have also been made a condition of approval of the project, so defining a little bit better parallel parking spaces is a condition there. On August 7th, we did have a meeting with the project review committee and the applicant to review the project and discuss concerns. All comments and conditions of approval have been included in your staff report where appropriate. So at this time, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant's here too. He might be able to answer some as well for you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Zeiderbart. Are there any questions right at this point from anyone on the commission?
Yes, I have a question. I know we talked about last month that that parking lot that's in that area there by Pizza Plus is going to be remodeled, and I noticed, I think I saw something in the paper about that happening soon. Is that going to be, is that going to increase the parking space there? Or is that pretty much going to stay the same, the amount of spaces?
It's pretty much going to stay the same. There's, I think there's 42 anticipated parking spaces in the, in the new parking lot we have. I think there was 35 maybe in the current configuration that it was. It actually got torn out today, so if you got a chance to go by there, it's dirt.
Oh, I didn't come that way, obviously.
There's no parking spaces there now. So that's about a two-to-three-month project, I believe, and that would be finished up, so there'll be 42 spaces there, but no negligible gain at all at that spot.
And then my other question is, is this establishment going to be lunch and dining, or just dining, or?
I do believe it's lunch and dinner, but applicant might be able to answer that a little bit better than I could.
Okay.
That's up, Ken. This project's already underway, but I was thinking in the future, like this is an add-on of 795 feet. I have no idea how many parking spaces that is off the top of my head, but maybe in the future, we can think about that when businesses are making additions and realize with more parking spots, I think it's more business too. Because people don't get a parking spot, and they don't realize that walking atmosphere more so, probably, maybe. And maybe that's something to look for in the future, but this is already underway, so.
Yeah, it's obviously his proposal tonight for you, so that's something to look at. If I'm understanding your question right, so adding square footage, you're talking about increasing parking at that point?
Yeah, it takes away from parking at that point. But like I said, this is already up and running with the plans and everything, just something for the future.
Yeah, I see. In our, in our current zoning ordinance, basically, we do talk about downtown being kind of a special district just because of the very nature of downtown. So it is, you do have to get kind of creative when it gets to parking, but there's, there's some not-so-expensive solutions, and there's some very expensive solutions to the problem. So, you know, some could be as simple as restriping streets and maybe even turning some streets into one-way streets, which, a big change of philosophy for Ripon. We don't have any one-way streets at this point. So that's something that could be considered to help add some more parking to downtown that's not very expensive. And then more expensive options would be buying land and developing more parking lots in the downtown area.
Yeah.
Those are all items that could happen, but obviously, there's always funding issues with those and stuff that come along with those.
Thanks, Ken.
You mentioning the one-way streets, have you ever looked at that at all? Is there any kind of analysis, or is that something that we'd have to do in the future?
We have. We actually did take a look at First Street, and the width of these streets that we have, you wouldn't be able to get parallel parking on both sides. It would only be on one side because of the current width of the streets of, say, First Street, Walnut, and Locust, and Elm. But it does gain, you do gain quite a bit more parking that way. I think just down First Street there, you would get about 85 spots if you did to diagonal parking along one side.
Yes.
Yeah, Ken, in that analysis, you talked about 850 is the max, you know, for any given day for parking. Did you break that up into the time of day at all, or is that just?
I did not. You know, I went through and looked at the current businesses we have and just tried to analyze the parking demands for those. You know, restaurants obviously create a bigger demand than more like retail and office do. But going through the list, I did write which businesses created which demand, so, I mean.
I suspect that during the day.
Yeah, some of these are office uses that close at 5:00, and then you have some restaurant uses down there that are open through lunch, so they do overlap. But then in the evening hours, some of those office uses are closed, and so the parking does open up. So I didn't do the time analysis.
But I'm thinking practically speaking, that after 5:30, that might go down to half or less.
Yeah, I mean, for instance, we have a library downtown that, you know, when they're closed in the evening, there's 30 parking stalls in that parking lot, public parking space. I mean, it's literally three blocks from probably the end of Main Street, so it's not a long walk, but it's probably longer than most people are used to here in Ripon.
There's also the Legion Hall parking too, when not in use by any of the organizations that participate in there, I think.
Yeah, those, I didn't assume on some of those, because those are private parking. I do think they would have an ability to shut those off if they didn't want public parking in those, but certainly, there could be some opportunities to explore those type of things with businesses that have parking spaces that after hours don't use them, like Bank of Stockton and such as well.
Yeah.
Ken, the, you mentioned the library parking lot. Is that, is that included in the numbers that you provided?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. Thanks. Very good. Any other questions? If not, would the applicant like to address the commission? If so, please, yeah, go to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name's Kevin Clark. I am the applicant. I live at 168 West Colony here in Ripon. And I have read, reviewed the plan, and accept it as is. Probably like to tell you a little bit about the restaurant, so it gives you kind of a feel for what it's going to look like. The restaurant will be, to address the hours, will be open for lunch through probably 11 to midnight on the weekends, to 9 o'clock on the, on the weekdays. The, the food will be what I call elevated bar cuisine, elevated bar pub cuisine with a real focus on, oh, excuse me, a real focus on local ingredients and doing a lot of things in-house. So we'll do in-house sausages, in-house, we'll grind our own burgers, we bake our own bread, those kind of things. Beyond that, we also want to focus on a tapas-style restaurant, so everything will be what I call paired and shared. So the idea, when you come in the restaurant, you can get a meal yourself, or it could be designed to be paired to the center of the table, and it's like, oh, that looks really good, let me try that. And then everything on the menu will also have a wine, a beer, or a cocktail pairing with it. And then the idea will be an upscale restaurant, like you saw in the, in the pictures. And that should give you a pretty good picture of what, what we're looking to do.
Very good.
I am assuming you currently have a restaurant somewhere? You have experience?
I don't. Yeah, so my, my, my experience actually is as a finance professional, but I've been researching. I have a huge passion for food, so I've kind of become a self-taught chef over the last three or four years. I'm quasi-retired, so I was a finance professional working in Silicon Valley for a long time. The commute got really hard on me and my wife, and so I retired and was looking to open up a business locally. And I've been working on this concept for around three years now. Having lived in Ripon for six, it seems like an awesome opportunity. And I have a seven-year-old son, so I can, I can kind of walk to work and be there close, and it's something I feel like the community needs. So that was kind of the impetus for doing it. I saved up enough money to do this, have a pretty good plan, and excited to execute on it. Yeah.
So there's a lot of, I'm sorry. There's a lot of Clarks in Ripon. Are you, are you part of the local Clarks, or?
Probably not, you know, but.
Just curious.
You know, not that I know of would be the best way to put that.
Okay, okay, good.
So you said you're new to the restaurant business, so are, and this is a new concept for you? I mean, are you all in and willing for the fight to make this work? Is that what your plan is, all in?
I'm all in, yeah. 100% of, you know, we're, we're self-funded. We've saved up enough money for it, so we, you know, we, we worked in a little bit of working capital, knowing that, you know, we'll probably, the approach will be to have kind of a soft opening. So we'll probably do, to work out some of the kinks, as, you know, I'll be the, for lack of a better word, the executive chef designing the food. A lot of that work is already done, but the operation part of it could be a little bit, a little bit of a learning curve. So we'll do at least a month of soft openings, and we've already kind of embarked on that a little bit, where we have groups come over and try the food. We have kind of a, we call it ladies of level 40. We have a group of around 18 ladies from the committee, from the community that come over and help me kind of test, ah, this is good, this is bad. But there'll still be some operational things to work out. And that's with that one month, which is already in the plan of, of working capital is for there. And then we have working capital set for around nine months of operating. So I feel like we're capitalized well, and that, you know, we can work through any of the, you know, me being green issues before we open.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, level 40, how did you?
Yeah, I had a feeling that would come up. So I tend to take things, when I get into something, I'm all, I'm all in. And there's a video game I play with my son, and the top level is level 40. And me and my wife had a little joke. I'm like, well, I finished that level. I guess it's time to actually dive into the restaurant full, full bore. And so we hit it, and my wife is in marketing, she works for Gallo, and she's like, that's a great name. And when I started thinking about it, I'm like, it really does kind of work. So we have like a little double meaning on it. So it means elevated food, but it also means, you know, I'm a little bit crazy when I do things.
What video game?
It's Pokemon Go. Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of silly, but I like it, and it reminds me of my son too, so.
Very good. I wondered, Kenny and Kevin, is there any opportunity for, and room for a couple of trees on this site? Shade might be something that would be a nice amenity, particularly to your outdoor dining potentially. And it would also, at some point in the future, it'd take a few years, but it would add to the, I think, the attractiveness of the streetscape.
I, I, I'm open to that concept. I think there's, I think there's kind of a requirement also for the drainage, so a tree might fit well where it drains. I'd have to rework the plans a little bit, but we're totally open for.
Yeah, and I, I don't necessarily think you, I'm not requesting that, but I'm just thinking, you know, that's kind of, in a sense, a, it's a naked streetscape, if you will, right now. And that would soften it particularly several years down the road.
Absolutely. And some of the planters and that kind of, you know, the idea of the restaurant is to be very much indoor/outdoor. So, you know, we'll be putting a decent amount of investment into making that outdoors feel like it's a, you know, it's part of the dining experience, right? So, yeah, I'm all for it.
Well, something to consider.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm assuming there's a required amount of landscape anyway, right? No, not for this?
Not in the downtown district.
Downtown, okay. That's, I, I, yeah. I should know that, because I'm in downtown, and we have other rules.
Downtown is an odd beast. I mean, you can build buildings property line to property line, so it's, it's hard to get those, but when you do have opportunities, it's nice to get things squeezed in to help some of that.
It's a little green, yeah.
With it being behind a gate outside, is there alcohol dining outside?
Yeah, he would be able to serve within the confined dining areas outside.
Okay.
Any other questions from the commission?
Let me just say, I think the plan looks great.
Oh, thank you.
I'm hoping it's going to turn out like it looks.
Oh, that, it's, that's, it will. Would be the best way to put it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we appreciate the effort you took to provide some, some really good ideas and conception. Yeah, appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Clark. Are there any folks here who would like to speak in favor of this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, John Anderson, J.B. Anderson, Land Use Planning. My office is 139 South Stockton, right across the street from this new business. I want to thank you, Kevin and Michelle Clark, for making this investment, this piece of property. Emmanuel's Brothers are going to be appreciative. I'm appreciative. Seeing the vision and the amount of time and energy put into this is wonderful. We're, we'll support you. There are some issues that staff's already talked about, parking. You know, as a land use planner, if you have a downtown area that has a parking problem, that means you've got a successful downtown. So there's a lot of businesses in the downtown core area, I think, that are going to be competing for parking spaces, but to walk a couple of blocks is not, not necessarily a big deal. Yeah, it's, the timing is a little bit different. You won't be opening tomorrow, thank goodness, because we've got at least two-month reconstruction of the parking lot right behind me. So that'll be done, and it'll be all, all nice and available for you guys when you guys ultimately, you know, open up this business. So parking is, is a problem, but you know what? It's going to be a problem in the downtown core area for a while. And quite frankly, I think we'll, we'll be able to all work, work together collectively and make it work long-term. Because I know there are some other plans for the vacant lot that's being used as temporary parking lot right now as it is. I am curious, though, if they're going to have any entertainment. And I, doesn't really affect me personally, because our business, as stated, is a, is a commercial business, so we're there until 5:00, 5:30, sometimes 6:00, or if I have a hearing, a little bit later, but not late at night. So kind of curious to hear from the applicant a little bit about that, because there are residents in the area. I don't know if you've met your neighbors yet, but there are folks within close proximity, still within the commercial district that might be concerned with that. So when you open up those doors, that noise has a tendency to spill out into the street, so. Other than that, that's good. I'm looking forward to having you guys open this up. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you, John. All right, are there any others who would like to speak in favor of this agenda item? Yes?
Good evening. Stephanie Hobbs here, as a resident, not as a stadium person. Home address is 322 Orange Avenue, which is about four blocks away from your restaurant, so I know, Vince and I are so excited. Because, I mean, for those of you that are Facebook friends, you know, we go, we walk down there all the time. And I do agree with the, the walkability of a downtown is so important, and I love that you're heading that direction. And, yeah, parking is an issue, and, but it also adds to the whole downtown experience of being in a small town, so I'm just going to put that one in there. So really quickly, I did, I wonder, and speaking of the parking, though, we just purchased, we, the city just purchased those four acres for the multimodal station over there. Could those be used temporarily?
Yeah, so I did not include that in the parking analysis, but yeah, that could. It is an area that's a little outside of the downtown. It's a little bit more of a walk, but that is definitely something that could be looked at to be used as well.
And thank you for doing pavers, right? You're doing pavers in the Pizza Plus parking lot, not asphalt?
Yep.
Great call. Thank you. And let's see here, also. So we were driving by your place the other day with our sons. My husband Vince and our two sons Luke and Timothy actually were the ones that installed those flagpoles on that corner for the American Legion. I'm assuming you'll be taking those out? But at first, they kind of balked at the idea, but as soon as I told them a nice gastro public's going in there, they were totally all over it. So, anyway, that was, that's really the only thing. Just wanted to tell you, yeah, we're really excited to have you, and everything looks fantastic. Thank you so much for all your work.
Terrific. Thank you, Stephanie. Any others who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, my name's Michelle Clark. I'm also at 168 West Colony here in Ripon. I wasn't planning to speak, but I just wanted to thank everybody. First of all, John and Stephanie, thank you so much for speaking in favor of it. We moved to Ripon six years ago and have been overwhelmed with love for the community. We think Ripon's a really special place. We're both not from here, and we're raising our son here on purpose. We think it's a really, almost a magical place that really feels a little bit like a throwback, the kind of community you can't find anymore. So part of this business venture, quite honestly, is really solidifying our roots in the community and making an investment back. We think there's really a lot of wonderful people and wonderful things going on. We know the growth is continuing, and we want. So part of this business venture, quite honestly, is really solidifying our roots in the community and making an investment back. We think there's really a lot of wonderful people and wonderful things going on. We know the growth is continuing, and we want to be a part of it. So it's really coming from a place of love and really wanting to settle here, so that's just, you know, sort of the, the other side of the equation. As Kevin said, I have twenty years of marketing experience, and Kevin has twenty years of finance experience. So even though there isn't specific restaurant experience in our background, we have had many, many conversations and analysis meetings about the viability of this as a business in this community, right? We are not coming in with rose-colored glasses. We both know how to run businesses, what works. So just know that there have been a lot of late-night pouring over P and Ls to make sure that when we open this, this is going to be a success. We really truly believe this is something that can last in the community for a long time and be a positive place for people to come, so.
Terrific. Any questions?
Yeah, while we have you up there, Mr. Anderson brought up the question about entertainment. Is that something you guys plan to have onsite?
We've talked about it. I think we're completely open to understanding what the community wants and needs, so we don't have a fully baked plan yet in terms of entertainment. I don't think of anything crazy, but, you know, we've had discussions about, there's restaurants that have, you know, a guitar guy strumming in the corner, that kind of stuff. That would be consistent with the vibe of the restaurant, consistent with the experience we want to deliver, but we don't have a solid plan and are open to input as we figure that out.
So no rock bands?
No, we have a seven-year-old. We understand the need to have quiet after a certain time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you. All right, are there any others who would like to speak in favor? Yes.
Yes, my name is Chad DeGraff. I actually live at one-forty-two Clifton Court here in Ripon, and one of the partners that have the neighboring property right next door. One of the things I, we are really excited about this project too, because one of our ideas is when we bought this, it's a visioning, a amazing downtown, trying to get it where it's like a Livermore, even like a Sonora, where people are walking around downtown. They want to be here, so. Uh, one of the things I was going to try and do too is show you our plan and kind of how it correlates together now with Kevin's, and I think you guys can hopefully see a vision for this whole corner as people come in, so. If you guys want to see that.
Terrific.
And this is, I want the buildings here.
Be a little sneak preview of what's coming.
Surprise, Kenny. Maybe.
So are, do you have, you have the vacant lot now that says, call M. Garcia for?
Correct, yes. Yes.
It's striped?
Yeah, striped dirt. I saw that, yes. Yes, very nice dirt.
We don't want any messy trees there, anyway.
So, yeah, this is kind of, you know, the vision is trying to correlate that, what kind of Kevin has, what you have downtown with the brick, we can have some restaurants, I don't know, yogurt, whatever is going to come in. Hopefully we can get people excited about downtown, coming there, and offer a whole lot more than what we have, so.
And you'll have some parking spaces too, probably?
Uh, yeah, we'll have actually some in the back. This is the plan. Now, this is real preliminary, so.
Yeah, that's good.
It could change with who moves in and everything else, but, yeah, we're looking at parking down that alleyway down there, so.
So, and will they be redoing the whole alleyway or just behind their store?
So, um, the Clarks will be redoing the alley just behind their parcel there, and then when Chad's group comes in, they'll be looking at what needs to be done for that alley, because there is part, part of that alley is already concrete, I think, behind.
There's a portion of it.
Portion, so they'll be finishing that off, and then the idea would be to add parking along, as much as we can along that back alley for their type of use as well.
So it won't be enough for exactly that, but we're at least adding some there that hopefully will eliminate a big stress parking there, so. That's the plan. I just want to, want to give you guys a heads up. I think what Kevin is doing there is fantastic and really looking forward to it.
What's your timeframe? When are you guys looking at moving?
Depends on when somebody comes in. We're just going to let, on the building, so. Whatever restaurant or whoever wants to come in is up to them, so.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this agenda item? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to it? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, bring the item back to the commission. Is there any, are there any further questions or additional items that you'd like to discuss with regard to this? If not.
Actually.
Yes, George.
Ken, the, the multimodal parking lot, can you show us where that's located as, I mean, we don't have any opposition here tonight, but I'm just thinking, you know, we, we've had opposition in the past to anything new coming into the area, even when the little automobile by appointment-only showroom thing came in, there were people from the neighborhood that, that came out and spoke and.
Sure, so the multimodal, the future multimodal site that we, the property was purchased, so it's the parking, it's the parking lot adjacent to the recycling center that's out there now. If you've all had a chance maybe to go through the recycling center a little bit. Um, that is the old parking lot for Nestle. It used to be there when they had the employee parking in that area, and then also where the water tower sits across the street is some property that was purchased. So there, the idea there would be to put a building and a platform over there by the tracks if Ace Train ever expands down this way, which they do have plans for, and then adding parking to that area for the Ace Train stop. That is available at this point now to maybe even be restripped to use in the interim if, if there's a, a demand for it. Um, it is just a little bit of a walk, and there's not necessarily exactly the best pedestrian path from there to get over to the downtown, but it is only about a block, block and a half. What's that? Right, so the, the idea obviously is, is once the multimodal comes in, is to extend Main Street, the, the feel of Main Street down with better sidewalk and lighting underneath there to kind of connect Main Street in with the multimodal station and the train station there. So the, there are some improvements that probably should be done if it's going to be utilized for that, but there's probably a potential, at least I did a rough count of, of some of the parking spaces that were there, or you can barely see some of the old striping. You probably could gain anywhere from fifty to seventy parking spaces right now if you just went out and striped that parking lot.
Which I think the statement that if you've got a parking issue in your downtown area, you've got a good problem there. You know, we, we want a vibrant downtown area, I think, and if, obviously this is maybe a little bit longer-term solution. It sounds like we, it could be utilized now, but to, to do it right with proper lighting, sidewalk access and whatnot.
Right.
It's maybe a little bit further down the road, but, you know, hopefully we get to a, a point where we really need that. I think it's a, that's a good potential solution there.
Very good. I don't see that as much of a walk at all if that is a future potential thing, and I think that's partly what Ripon families want, like everybody here has talked about, is that, you know, romantic straw around the corner, and then, and Ripon families are going to do that. You know, they're going to want to hit that restaurant they hit, and it's going to be cool.
I like it. I like to encourage that walkability down there. I just, I mean, we're two miles from downtown, but we, we walk it all the time. It's just nice. It's fun.
Very good. Any other questions? If not, would someone like to forward a motion on this agenda item?
Oh, I just wanted to say, closing, I'm really looking to, looking forward to a Ripon family opening a restaurant there, and you guys have been here six years, but you sound just like Ripon ice with how much heart and soul you have in this town, so, thank you very much.
I will make a motion that we approve the level forty public housing major site review SR seventeen dash zero-four based on the findings and subject to the conditions of the staff report.
Very good, thank you, Deborah. And is there a second?
I will second. No, go ahead, Ben, sorry.
I'll be happy to second.
Mr. Custer, seconds. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. The agenda item is approved. Congratulations and really look forward to the opening of your restaurant and wish you nothing but success there. All right. Staff report, Mr. Zeiderberg, what is on your radar for the next several weeks? Thank you. Congratulations again.
We still are working through a couple of projects to get in front of the planning commission. It looks like at least one of them would be an October project. We do have a couple of housing projects coming your way that are in the North Point specific plan area along Fulton Avenue. Still trying to work through logistics on a couple of things on the, both of those. One's probably a little bit closer than the other in, in being ready to come before the commission. Hoping to maybe have both of them at the same time so you can review, review both projects and make a determination at that point. So shooting for the October meeting on that, and then also possibly in, at the September meeting. If not, it will, it will actually probably slide to the October meeting is a, uh, application from Ripon Christian Schools to do a, a new preschool building. It will be along Main Street. They're looking at taking a house down that they own along Main Street and putting a building and associated parking lot and stuff there for their needs. So that, if, if we can get everything in line on that one, we will have that in front of you guys at the September meeting. That's all I've got really on the radar at this point.
Very good, thank you. Any reports from any of the commissioners? If not, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks, John and Stephanie.